Now. You ready? All right, here we go, guys. Welcome to Market Charter Township's regular scheduled Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, June 10th, 2020. It is 7:03 PM. And with that, I've called the meeting to order. So roll call, Mike Springer from Eagles Nest Road.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Dave Wigan, Brookton Road.
Steve Hakinen, Lake Enchantment.
Ryan Deiderson, Staff Planner.
We do have.
Jason McCarthy.
Okay. So there's six of us here, correct?
We've got Randy on the line, too.
Okay. Okay, we have the agenda up next, and there is something that I'm going to ask Mr. McCarthy to explain that we would like to add to tonight's agenda. It's an important, important item in my mind. So, Mr. McCarthy?
Yeah, I've asked Chairperson Springer to include an item under Reports entitled 2021 TAP Grant Application.
We don't want that under Reports. Don't we want it so we could make an action on it?
You can take an action. You can add it to wherever you want, I guess, but.
Okay. Because it's new business, why don't we do New Business F, 6F?
Okay.
Okay. So do we have, I'll make that motion. Do we have support for that?
Work.
And that is?
Jim.
Mr. Johnson? Any questions? On the favor? That's a roll call. I'll say yes. Seconder? Johnson?
Yes.
Hakinen and Wigan?
Yes. And yes. Hey, Mike, if I could, if I could add, you might just want to do a regular roll call on your votes. It just makes it easier. Like that. Yeah, just call the name and get their answer.
Okay, thank you.
Good idea.
Okay, we have the minutes from the previous meeting of May 27.
Mike, I would move to approve the minutes.
I'm going to second that. Any questions from anybody? In case all in favor, Mike Springer is yes. Mr. Wigan, I'm not doing it right. Wigan's digging his head. Okay. All right, Dave, you want to conduct this meeting? No, so. All right, so. Go ahead, Mr. Wigan.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hakinen?
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries unanimously. Public comment. Do we see anybody from the public out there? Seeing none, we'll move on to New Business, which is Market Township MSUX Mach 2 Climate and Health Adaptation. And here we have this. Just a little background on this, that we did respond to MSU, the Task Force met via Zoom, and we put together a number of recommendations, especially important was Ken Filpus from MDOT, and also Jason McCarthy took images and put his comments with it, and that was real helpful. So the next thing is, I'm actually going to turn this over to Jason, if you don't mind, Jason. Looks like you've got this all ready to go. So if you wouldn't mind telling him about what transpired today, and take it from there.
Sure. So today, we met with the MSU Extension Team, and they recapped and made sure that they understood the comments that we had for them. We reviewed several of the concepts and made specific recommendations for changes, and we were also made some comments on some planning theory that went along with. It's going to be a narrative in planning, you know, guidelines and recommendations that go along with the images. So it's not just images, it's actual, you know, some planning theory behind it. So we discussed them having something back to us in the form of another meeting to kind of recap everything and provide some final documents and recap, you know, all of the meetings that we've had, and then, you know, let the public see those. So they were talking about maybe doing that at the end of June. We were talking about Thursday, potentially June 25th as an online meeting date. Or potentially in-person meeting date, you know, I don't know, whatever. I doubt that, actually, because I think Randy Gerard, Manager Gerard, indicated that the building would be closed for an additional 30 days after we go back to work. I think that was the last I heard, anyway. So regardless, they're going to have some stuff for us to review, and that project is moving forward. And we'll talk about that a little bit more in 6F.
All right. Next one, New Business 6B, 2021 County Road 498 Ontario Avenue Construction Project Discussion.
So this is a continuation of the Road Commission's improvements to Ontario to include some storm drains, a new cross-section, of course, and then the maintenance strip on the east side of the road. And this, you can see the project scope from Allen to Center Street. Looks like, you know, almost another third of, more than the third, almost, of that segment between Wright Street. And eventually, that'll connect to Wright Street, they're telling us, with the same cross-section. You know, they rely on the funding source that was identified in the staff report, the Small Urban Program, which I provided a link to in case you wanted any additional information. But as that is a federal aid road, you know, they are allowed to tap into funds like that. And as such, we're just, you know, letting you guys know ahead of time. It's nice to talk about these projects ahead of time, and if there's any questions, I guess, let me know. But this is all really preliminary and just informational.
I'm just disappointed in the county that their map shows Erie Street going right through our park.
Oh, yeah, we can get them to update that.
No, I mean, it's a county map, Jason.
Yeah, an old one.
I thought they would, that Mr. Wigan would remember the the hullabaloo over that. Mr. Wigan?
Yeah, I was wondering, Jason, are Public Works planning on replacing the water and sewer lines of that project?
We can send that out for you. I don't know if they've been doing that in the past as part of the other segment, but I imagine that they would want to continue that.
Yeah, they did it as part of the other segment, and what they were doing with the other segment is they they upgraded it to a 12-inch main as opposed to, I think it was an 8-inch main, strictly because it was the new standard. I just wondered if they're planning on continuing it the rest of the way down Ontario Street.
I would hope so. I can ask Public Works Superintendent Kangus and get back to you on that.
Okay.
Okay, Item 6C, Road Maintenance Methodology Update, GSB 88 Discussion.
This is all planner Deiderson here. I'm going to let him take over.
Take it away. So at the last Roads Committee meeting, we have small discussion regarding a road treatment option that has been rising in popularity. John or Dan from Farner had come up in conversation when I was speaking about our current program. The treatment is called GSB 88, stands for Gilsonite Sealer Binder. It essentially, let me get a screen shared here, go on. Can you guys still see my screen? Okay. It essentially is a modified asphalt emulsion that gets sprayed from the back of the truck, and then with the option of sanding or not sanding. It has the ability to fill micro voids on the road surface. It's pliable, it's flexible, it's strong. It slows down the regular oxidation process that regularly occurs on road surfaces. At the same time, it has the ability to protect against thermal degradation, slows the rate of water infiltration, and it has the ability to uphold the aggregate and some fines on the HMA surface itself. At the last Roads Committee meeting, there was a discussion regarding the big thing obviously being cost. Farner has given us a base price of anywhere between 90 cents to $1.30 per square yard. That was as of 2019. When I talked to Dan, he estimated it to be about $1.20 per square yard. That still doesn't factor in things like traffic control, the size of the projects. And this is all if we were to utilize this treatment. You compare that base price to our chip seal plus, which is at $3.33 in our Roadsoft software. So it's about half the cost considering $1.50 for GSB 88. I'm going to try to make sense of this screen as far as price goes, real quick. Not get too deep into it, but there's three road segments for our 2020 maintenance that we had slated for chip seal plus that was ultimately removed. Brickyard Road, and then Erie from Werner to Dyrrite, and Erie from Dyrrite to Badger. You can see under this green column that this is the estimate that our Roadsoft software spit out. The bids that were actually received by Farner were in the range of $2,000 to $5,000 more than we had expected. So for those same stretches of roads, if we were to do GSB 88, it's considerably less than what the Roadsoft had estimated, and it still might be less than what would actually come in from Farner. But this is all preliminary, and I'm not saying that GSB 88 would be a good candidate for these road segments. Other things to consider would be GSB 88 doesn't necessarily penetrate into the asphalt as other options do as much. There's still regular resealing that would likely be needed later down the road. And while maybe a good candidate over chip sealing roads, there's still going to be some, maybe some tops of the chips that would wear easier. But we all know how residents and everybody feels about chip sealing, so. I guess the takeaway is that it's possibly a good economical and environmentally friendly alternative, and it could possibly provide some more flexibility if we were to incorporate it one way or another into our road maintenance program.
Is this a glorified driveway sealer?
That's something that I was maybe considering as well, but it's a little bit more, I think it's a little more in-depth than that.
It has an aggregate.
Yeah.
Gilsonite. Got sand.
And the Gilsonite itself, I think, is only found in Utah and Saudi Arabia.
Gilsonite, is that a clay?
It's a naturally occurring pure mineral asphalt ore. So it gets dissolved and mixed with the other additives in GSB 88, and then that helps strengthen and solidify the surface, and it cures in about an hour or two. That's kind of the magic, that's kind of the magic ingredient for GSB 88.
Has it been done up here anywhere, you know?
I don't know if it's been done anywhere locally. Doing some research, there's a city in Wisconsin right across the lake from Madison, McQuon, that they contract with Farner almost exclusively for their preventative maintenance plan projects, and they spend somewhere between $100,000 and $200,000 annually or biannually solely on GSB 88. They've been incorporating it a lot since 2017.
Ryan, have you talked to anybody or a municipality? Or do you think there would be, you know, some advantage to getting ahold of somebody and just asking them how they like it and how it's wearing? Because I mean, they do claim to have a three- to six-year lifespan on that, which is favorable as one of the advantages as well.
Yeah, I'm trying to link up with the engineering technician in the city of McQuon. He's busy doing a lot of fieldwork, so I'm trying to track him down and get his opinions on it. Then, yeah, it's been seen to last as long as seven years with minimal other, you know, measures taken on the road surface as well, too. So I'm trying to get someone's opinion as far as that, and McQuon seems to be pretty pretty well versed.
We can have a comment.
Ryan, when you talk to some other people about that, one of the questions that comes to mind that you might want to ask them is, do they do crack sealing operations before they do this overcoating? Or do they do overband or something like that?
Okay.
Yeah. Considered to be adequate to fill those cracks?
That's a good point. That's something I saw brought up on my initial research, too, was there is kind of a debate as far as whether or not GSB 88 should go first and then crack sealing over the top or vice versa. So it's a good question.
Does MDOT have a view on this stuff?
That's another entity I could reach out to and see what their thoughts are. They've experienced with it up here.
Have you talked about it with Tech Ed and the Road people? Have they had any experiences with it?
The extent of it with Tech was putting it into the Roadsoft program and seeing what type of roads it spit out as candidates, and then the price estimate as well. I've done a bit of talking with Tech, and they're guys prior to implementing the 2020 program in alternative preventive maintenance treatments. GSB 88 didn't come up, so I'll reach out to them, too. This will all be good stuff brought back to the next Roads meeting as well, their feedback.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Deiderson? In that case.
Nice job, Ryan.
Yes.
Thank you.
In this case, or at this point, let's move to 6D, Scheduled Recreation Plan Update Public Hearing Discussion.
Yeah, I included a portion of the
Right, that's in here.
The parks, the parks and rec requirements. The goal of this public hearing is for DNR approval of our recreation plan. We can have a recreation plan just for the sake of having one, like we have a transportation plan. But the difference with the recreation plan is that we can apply for grants through the DNR, which you're probably all aware of. And, you know, we have to go through this checklist and complete the Community Park and Recreation Plan checklist. As a component of that, we have to have a public hearing within, you know, 30 days of, well, after, our plan's been out for 30 days review, we have received any comments, which is unfortunate, I guess, but that's why you have another public hearing, just to let everybody know, hey, this is your last chance to comment on it. Once the public hearing is done for adoption, we'll go to the Township Board for adoption of the plan, and then it'll go to the Regional Planning Commission, which is QPAD and the DNR. And then it'll be on file for five years, and then we get to do it all over again in 2024.
So do I hear a motion to set a public hearing date for the 24th?
July 10.
Okay. One of the Commissioners like to make that motion?
Moved.
That was Jim Johnson? Second? I'll second it, then. Springer? Wait. Prove the public or hold the public hearing for the rec plan on July 10th?
Let me double check that. Hold on.
Okay, yeah, I'm just.
I'm sorry, July 8th. My bad.
All right. July 8th. Any? Friendly, okay.
Oh, yes.
Go ahead.
What?
I thought you said a friendly amendment.
Oh, no, I did. That was Jason changing the date to July 8th.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, any other comments or questions on this? We'll take a vote. Motion maker? That was Mr. Johnson.
Yep.
Vote.
Right.
Second, Springer, aye? Wigan?
Yeah.
Hakinen?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion pass unanimously. Uh-oh. Wigan? I thought you said, okay, never mind. Here we go. Planning Commission Bylaws for Review. I have not had a chance to go through this. The only reason, I would like us to look at this, and I will between now and the next Planning Commission meeting, go through there, see if there's anything that catches my eye that needs to be changed. We just recently updated, or we're in the process, well, we updated the rec bylaw, I'm sorry, the rec committee bylaws. They haven't been passed by the committee. That will hopefully happen next Tuesday, but kind of using that as a base, because I've also used the Planning Commission bylaws to update the rec committee bylaws. And also, our committee has made a lot of editorial suggestions. So what I'd like us to do as a team, the same thing that the rec committee did. I would like us to get this through. And if nothing else, at the end, we should just update the date, just so that when we leave, you know, the end of this year, we've got our, we got a new rec plan, a new master plan, new transportation plan, all the bylaws, everything else is up to date. So I will work on this. I would hope that the other Commissioners will look through this. And if you see anything that should be corrected, or you got suggestions, please forward them to both myself and Jason. And if nothing else, we can change that date for 10 years since the last time it was reviewed.
Hey, Mike?
Yes, sir.
What might make that happen a little quicker and everybody get on the review is if you actually send a copy of it with an action item note.
Okay.
And then everybody will be looking at the same piece of paper.
All right. So, yeah, I mean, this is the same piece of paper we're looking at right now, and everybody has that in their packet. So you want me to resend just those pages?
Yeah, I would just send those pages with a little note on the front that we're supposed to review this by the next Planning Commission meeting.
Good idea. Thank you, Dave. I will do that. Okay, so we are now on to F, Transportation Alternative Program. Did I get that right, Jason? Mr. McCarthy?
Yeah, sorry, I was on mute there. Ryan, can you pull up the zoomed out non-transportation, or the transportation non-motorized map that you made earlier?
You want the one zoomed in? Or zoomed out?
Well, the one that showed more area.
Yep, I've got that up right now.
Okay, and I am, of course, not looking at that. Anyway, we have an opportunity to partner with MDOT once again on a on a traffic alternatives program or a federal grant application to install pathway, continuing in the same fashion as where it terminates at the corner of Wright Street and US 41. The pathway would go from Wright Street to Commerce on the north side of the highway. And if you can, I'm not looking at it, but I assume Ryan has it up. There should be a red segment, a longer one along the highway that you can see. And that's the segment that we're talking about. The other two red segments are the other ones that we need to connect. And if you start, and Ryan demonstrated that well on that map, the green areas are already done, and it really shows a missing link in our in our non-motorized transportation network. So the nuts and bolts of it is that the grant application, of course, is due June 24th. The Township Board would have to approve a resolution that would commit us to funding 20% of the estimated cost, which is $200,000. $200,000 is the total project cost that matched for the township would be $40,000. The numbers were massaged later this afternoon to reflect, you know, engineering, and MDOT is willing to co-sponsor the application, which obviously gives it a lot of credence. And they're also willing to provide 10% or engineering. What I'm asking of the Planning Commission, and I know it's kind of a short notice, but that's how these kind of things happen, is to consider, if you will, or you don't have to. I've been told, and I asked this question earlier today, if we're not successful with the grant, which we would know about relatively quickly, probably in August. If we're not successful with the grant, could the project still be done within the project scope and budget for what MDOT is doing? And they said no. So we could have 1,500, you know, additional linear feet of pathway separated in concrete, it looks like, is what they want to continue to do for $40,000. Now, I was just thinking, you know, we've gotten some buy-in before from some of the local businesses, and maybe we could whittle that number down a little bit. I wouldn't say a tremendous amount, but I still think it's a pretty good deal. I know that there are concerns that we're going to have with the Township Board and budgeting issues, but I still think from a planning standpoint, we should try it. And my recommendation, or staff's recommendation, well, mine, not Ryan's, I suppose, but is to move it to the Township Board and let them decide on it.
What kind of a motion do you need on that?
I would appreciate a motion recommending that the Township Board consider an application for a 2021 TAP grant project for the additional segment of non-motorized transportation along US 41 from Wright Street to Commerce for consideration and possible approval.
I'm sorry, are you looking for the board to support, is that a resolution that is supported? Or are you just looking for them to?
Or support a resolution, yeah, by supporting the grant application, they would obviously be supporting the resolution. The hiccup, and I'm going to have to do the staff report pretty lickety-split to get it out for tomorrow, because all this stuff kind of came today, thankfully, is that I will have to put all that together for a board packet tomorrow. Not the resolution, per se. I mean, the resolution, if they agree to it in consensus, can be drafted up and then brought to them. But they will have to know that if they accept the proposal, that they'll be committing approximately or up to $40,000, or nor more than $40,000 if they wish, and maintenance, continued maintenance of it.
So you're not looking for the board to support a resolution? You're looking for the board to support the that staff proceed with the grant application?
Yes.
Yes, but but the board is required to pass a resolution as a part of this, just like it was for the underpass before we applied for that.
So they have to do that right at the first one?
Well, I would suspect, yeah, I mean.
Okay. I see that.
Well, if you figure out.
Because there's not another.
What was the motion?
There's not, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm on the phone. There's not another board meeting other than next week before the 24th is, I guess, what I'm getting at.
Okay, if if you can figure out the wording on that for the for the resolution, I will make the motion that we approve it.
And I will second.
Um, yeah, we'll get it in a minute. Ryan and I will wordsmith that.
Because I know the.
Discussion.
I know the wording for a resolution is a little, a little particular on how it goes together.
Lot of whereas.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, if the planning commission makes a recommendation that the board should consider this grant application, that's enough. Then I can go to bat with the board for 40 grand, basically, is what it most do.
Okay. So so be the motion.
Thank you.
So be the second. Discussion. Mr. Hakenin and Mr. Johnson?
So do you envision this to be more of a bicycle?
While we get this motion passed, so hearing none, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Wait, 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 timeout, timeout. Steve had, Steve had discussion.
Yeah. Okay.
So so do you envision this nonmotorized to be more for bicycles, for pedestrians walking? And pedestrians walking from where? I mean, I I'm trying to visualize who is going to be using that.
Lots of people probably do.
Great question. So Steve?
A lot of people use that.
Yeah, okay, no, and this is a question. Okay, who's talking?
The chair.
Go ahead.
My observation is that people walk in that length there, that red length, all the time. And all we're doing is we're going to make it better, safer, more attractive for people to utilize that. And it does help connect our nonmotorized pathways. I think this is a great idea. I think we don't want to miss this opportunity. I'm done.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and.
Mr. Weeden?
From more of a demographic standpoint, Steve, to answer your question, we've done a really bang-up job in the last seven years of utilizing multiple funding sources to connect. So essentially, right now, I'm on Northwoods Road. I can jump on the Iron Heritage Trail, which is abutting my property, ride east, break off to the north, go under the tunnel, and I can go all the way safely to Wright Street right now. Eventually, hopefully, that pathway would connect across to Commerce Drive. And then we can work with the road commission, see if they can assist us with these smaller projects, which would be a connection from, let's say, Commerce to Warner and on the Wright Street side, from Wright Street up to Venture. Of the 4,000, probably more than that, with the 20,000 cents is coming, of the 4,000 people we have in the township, 52% of them live in that one square mile section of of Strobridge. And you have the North Trails, which is a huge riding opportunity, let's say, at the end of Wright Street, essentially. So now the road commissions work, we've got it Warner all the way west to east. We've got Ontario going almost all the way north to south. So now you have these these nodes that residents can jump on from any southwest, southeast, northwest, southwest corners of Strobridge and jump on these and go basically under the highway, south, south and north. You can virtually connect from the North Trails to the South Trails safely under the highway. And then you've got the Iron Heritage Trail that connects kind of everything or provides backbone. So it's it's they're not trails to nowhere, and people who who pay attention to this stuff will start recognizing routes and and the ability to connect safely, and maybe they'll make a choice to ride or walk. That's that's, you know, I've always learned that sidewalks are the foundation of community. That's an old planning statement.
And also, I want to point out, and Jason, we saw images of that corner there at Wright Street and US 41 with MSU and they're they're making it look attractive, sustainable, and also within the guidelines of MDOT. So we've got that going.
Hey, Mike? If you guys remember just a few short years ago, and Steve, I don't know if you were on the commission then or not, with our design standards, we tried to put together a package requiring sidewalks in front of new development. And the catchphrase used there was sidewalks to nowhere. And I would present to you the sidewalks to nowhere. This is this is what we've got. We've got essentially three segments to finish, and our sidewalk to nowhere has, in a few short years, become connectivity. And that's, it was not very well accepted by by the board, and it was not very well accepted by the businesses in the community. But here we are, and we've got it done for little or no money. And I think we need to move this forward, because we move this forward, we've got two little stretches left to do. And we've got the whole thing tied together.
Any other comments?
How much do you, how much do you anticipate it would take to do everything that you want to do just off the top of your head if it's going to cost this much for this part of it? Because this is just a part of all.
Yeah. You know, I think.
I've got, I've, I'd have to re, revisit those estimates from the road commission, and they're a few, few years old. Those segments were also initially included on a safe routes to school project that we were successful with, but they were excluded from that after, you know, we reviewed the budget that was available to us, and we made that adjustment. So those would just need to be updated. But I would say it's in the ballpark of, you know, the run up Wright Streets a little bit longer. The segment, I think, was 100, under $100,000 to go from Commerce to Warner. And I suspect it would be maybe, you know, 50 to 100,000 along Venture. But you have to remember, along Venture and stuff, we, you know, we, we installed storm drain and did some other items. I don't think that would be necessary on those two segments.
Jason, help me clarify something. You're talking about long venture. No, we are.
I'm sorry, along Wright Street to Venture.
You mean Wright Street, correct?
Yeah, but if you remember, across Venture, there used to be a ditch, and that ditch was replaced with the pathway. And then we included storm drain along with catch basins. And that's how that got done, because the property owners didn't want to give up any property to put in the pathway. So we had to squeeze it into the right of.
Okay. Mr. Weeden?
Yeah, I think you got to remember that it's never been the intention of anybody that supported this, that the township or the residents should dig into their pockets and take all of this 100%. This has all been done with grants and grants on top of grants. And and I think I'm sure that that's the way the rest of it's going to proceed. I don't think you could ever ask the the board or anybody else to approve any and not wanting to do this whole thing out of our pocket. I just don't think it'll happen. And I think this is going to be a hard sell this year with everything that's going on. Hopefully, hopefully, we can move it through. But but the two pieces that are left here on the map that need to be done, if we get the money to do this, I mean, they're not just going to pay for those. There's there's means to get that done out there, those grants and avenues to collect money to make sure that happens. And that's what all these committees and commissions and everybody does, is they go out and find the money and get it done for a dime on a dollar.
The way I look at this, every section that we do qualifies us or leads us closer to other grants that we may not have been able to apply for previous to this. Safe routes to schools, they didn't want to do that Wright Street thing. Maybe if we put it down US 41, now we've connected to some homes, some families, and now maybe then North Star would want to work on a safer routes to school grant. Just, you never know.
Yeah, a couple, couple of fun facts about the tunnel. It connected an additional 3% of our population safely under the highway. So all those subdivisions, and and it's all about piecing things together. I don't, I don't need to tell anybody on the planning commission, you know, that it takes time. And again, we, we have a way to connect Bishop Woods along the gas line from an easement that we acquired from a property owner, just based on asking him for the easement and explaining what it was for. And so the connectivity stuff happens by through partnerships with MDOT, through partnerships with NTN, the Snowmobile Club, Iron Heritage Trail, Rec Authority. I mean, there's so many different players that are all working to really accomplish the goals and objectives of the master plan and to answer to the the residents when it comes to community surveys, which is something that I'm super proud of as an employee of the township, is that we we actively engage the community and we actively address prop, you know, projects.
Okay. It's been a little long. Did we take a vote on this?
To be, does it have to be done on 40? Part of it has to be on 41?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Jim?
With with this grant that you're getting from MDOT, does part of it have to be on 41 like that?
Yeah.
It'll be within the MDOT right of way.
But I, but I mean, if you, if you didn't do 41, would there be other sections you could do instead of toward 41?
No, because it has to be within a federal segment of highway, which which this is, US 41.
Okay.
That's the, that's the funding source that we utilized for the tunnel, too. Because it was within the right of way, it qualified for those funds. It also scored very high because it tied to existing safe routes to school infrastructure. Well, excuse me, relatively closely it did. But they saw the benefit of that. And they actually extended the pathway all over to Wright Street. Initially, it was only going to go to the roundabout at Target Walmart. They added that segment afterwards, which was a really nice thing for them to do. So, yeah, these partnerships take time to foster. You know, I've been here for almost 10 years, and we have great working relationships with our regulatory agencies, and and we benefit from that.
Would it be a better idea to go all the way along 41 there instead of using the money for Wright Street and Commerce?
Well, I think in the future, Jim, we could work on additional pathways in that direction. And I think we have to take what we can get. I mean, I think we have to take what we can get as far as when these projects come through, when the opportunities come through. And I think for that segment, it's an important segment in that it provides connectivity. And it's what we might be able to afford right now. I don't think we could have a full-blown proposal for, let's say, $150,000 right now a match, because we just, there's a lot of uncertainty with the with the budget. I know that.
Right. Well, I'm not saying to increase. I'm just saying, instead of, instead of going on Commerce and and right there, would would it be more beneficial to the township to go all the way up US 41 in front of Target and up to the car dealership?
It's already done.
That's already done. Yeah, that's.
It's, it's been constructed.
Green lines exist.
Oh, they put that, oh, is that what they just did this year?
Yes, sir. That was the, one of the punch list items on the 2019 project that are currently being completed, including landscapes, the roundabouts, and the the grass.
Oh, sorry.
Actually, as well, so.
I didn't see the existing on that. I just, I looked at the planned, sorry. Okay, so those are all done and green.
Mr. Weeden?
What what I would hope would come out of this, and I think one thing that might possibly come out of this is when we, if we can get this one section done and get us all the way to Commerce with this, with this nonmotorized pathway, is that the DDA will see what's going on. And they have a source that they can come up with some matching funds. They they can levy up to what, two mils to come up with matching funds to finish the rest of that up?
Some of those are already.
Yeah.
But nevertheless, you wouldn't hurt, I mean, bring it to the, hey, and maybe.
If you get further east along 41, it becomes more problematic with the right of way that's available to put this on. But still, I think it's, if we can get this section done, and we can get the DDA interested and finishing the rest of it, I think there's a way to work it out. We just need to get somebody else involved in it. And I think the DDA is a good group to get involved in that because it says squarely in their area.
And if I can add to that, let's get involved in this part, too. They may say no to this, but it gets them thinking about the other parts that you're suggesting. Mike?
I I understand what Mike's saying there. I don't, I think if you wanted to get the the temperature of the DDA, they would say, okay, we've been, we've invested enough on the west side. We need some love on the east side, right? So if if for some reason the township as a whole, or as a governing body, can take care of this segment, the DDA, like Dave was saying, might be a lot warmer to the idea of doing a larger project in which they would, you know, consider a levy for. The big box retailers are not the ones serving on the DDA or on, well, on the Township Business Association or, you know, some of the larger retailers. We have the small businesses which are located in that area. So if you're catching my drift, I'm saying that they would, they would probably be more supportive of a of a project that fits the scope that goes from Commerce down to Brickyard or Brookton, excuse me. And and we could do that. We could do that in a year or when the economic, you know, changes a little bit and 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 just keep doing it in phases. This stuff doesn't happen within five years. Sometimes it takes 10. Sometimes it takes seven. But we've, you know, been blessed with an accelerated pace. But that doesn't mean that, you know, we could accelerate that pace that the DDA is supportive because they can come up with their own match.
Okay. Did we vote on this?
No.
Okay. I believe Mr. Weeden was the motion maker. Oh, yes. I believe I seconded it. I'm a yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Hakenin?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Correspondents?
Thank you.
Thank you. Approve, approved road committee minutes from February the 4th. You want to mention anything, Mr. Weeden?
No, that's pretty much old, old business. That's from.
February.
Four or five months ago.
You also have the approved recreation committee minutes of April 21st in your packet. I'll just save that for discussion when we get to the recreation committee report. Reports, township board report. That's Mr. Weeden.
Yep, the board is continuing to work on its manager replacement. And the, what we have of late is our Thomas Marcus, who is our candidate that we were negotiating contract with, has declined to negotiate any further. So he's pulled his name out. So we're back out, we're back out looking again. So we've started the process over again. And we have a special meeting on Friday, and I don't know what the date is because they just, or the time is because it's set it up. But we have a special meeting to discuss this again on Friday.
Thank you, Dave. You're up next again. Road committee report.
Road committee report is pretty much all we talked about at the road committee was the this year's. the this year's maintenance and rehabilitation. And I know they got delayed by the weather a little bit. And Ryan, do you know if they started yet?
So they started yesterday doing crack sealing. They had a team at Lake Enchantment working their way up, and they had a team in Trowbridge working their way down. So I'm assuming they're going to finish up Thursday or Friday.
Okay. Other than that, we just discussed this GSB eighty-eight again. So that was it for the Road Committee.
Okay. No recreation committee report in there. I'm going to throw. Okay, I'll do that. Dee, zoning and planning report. Mr. McCarthy.
Yeah, I'll just, Ryan can chime in when he wants to, but we facilitated some zoning approvals for Harbor Freight to go into the old Gander Outdoors location. So look for that to occur sometime in the future. And we also received a site plan for the new fishing, well, a preliminary site plan, just some basic comments for the new fish and wildlife facility, which is going to be located just west of Remax on Venture. Lots of garages, additions, new home, well, a few new homes. Ryan, you want to add anything?
That's pretty much it. It's property maintenance time, too, so that's been keeping us busy. Couple of new businesses. There's a new fitness consultation business in the township off of US forty-one. Other than that, yeah, it's 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 been busy.
We'll have some updates. Hopefully, next meeting regarding the draft marijuana ordinance. And likely, some updates on the plans for North Iron Church to utilize the former JCPenney's location. They have submitted some interior renovation plans, and we've been in discussion with legal counsel regarding how to proceed on those. There are a couple of hiccups in dealing with an assessor's plat. And whether or not they're going to have a lease or they're going to have fee simple ownership. So we'll be working through that flex issue. We did order some new Plexiglas, I believe, Ryan, for the signs at Schwammwood Park. So once that job is complete, we'll have the the new maps, that map that Ryan's created installed. A lot of day to day questions is, there was some question from Bruce Pasola, who's having issues locating water on those westerly parcels of the Blue Heron Bluffs Two. So we had a robust discussion today about, okay, what would it take to get water up Forestville Road and, you know, across the across the the bridge and to the basin with Randy and John. Obviously, the the developer always pays for that, so at this time, it's not feasible for Bruce. But he sold all the all the rest of lots. The only ones he hasn't sold are three or four that they can't get water. He talked about an additional development development up that way, excuse me, and he also, you know, I I try to justify a potential water project. When you when you talk about the top townships' water projects and, you know, they they haven't really committed to the project down in four ninety-two and hooking up those wells. When you're looking at, you know, from my view, a low hanging fruit of potentially adding additional tax base to the community, you have water main up to here on Woods Drive. And there is a lot of property, about two hundred and sixty acres, that Longyear has, you know, we rezoned that area north of here on Woods to be scenic residential. So you know, it's kind of one of those chicken and the egg things that we always struggle with when it comes to utility extensions. You know, you want to extend utilities so that you can incur development, but you have to make the developer do it. So it's it's hard to speculate on things like that. But so, yeah, we've been keeping busy with a myriad of discussion topics.
Thank you, Jason. Yeah, the reason the recreation report wasn't on there because I was looking at the recreation committee agenda. And for some reason, we don't have a recreation report on the recreation committee agenda. So in light of that, I just want to thank Ryan Deederson for the trail kiosk maps that he's been working with the Rec Committee on. You know, Mr. Wigan's anxious to get the materials and install. Thank you, Mr. Wigan. Schwammwood Park Trail Connector. As I understand it, Mr. McCarthy and the board has an agreement with NTN. And they're going to prove the trails there and maintain them, or at least this one particular connector. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jason. Community events. Sustainable built initiative, we've already talked about, it's on the agenda for next Tuesday, June sixteenth.
Let's talk about community events for a second. The board did take action to cancel the car show and community days for twenty twenty, unfortunately, at the last meeting. So just so everybody knows.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, we need a public comment. I don't believe we have any public out there. So let's move on. Committee members. Would like to go first. Mr. Wigan.
I'd just like to let Ryan know that he's been in the truck for almost two weeks now.
What's been in the truck?
Dave, the tools have been in the truck for almost two weeks now. I'm just waiting for the call.
Those signs?
About those signs have kiosks.
They're at Champion Glass, and I'm going to be, you're going to be the first one I call when you're back.
Right.
Nice.
Ryan's the key master now. Got all those little fucking keys.
All the keys, all forty of them.
Don't carry them on your belt. Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Mr. Hakenin?
Yeah, a couple of questions, just out of curiosity. The old Senex site, what's happening there?
On the north side of the property, they are creating a detention pond that will service the entire site, so including Napa. Discount Tire has applied per the ordinance for a one-year extension on on commencing their site plan. And they may start later in the summer, but they may wait till next year. And there was, they did close on the property to the north, so there'll be another development. I'm not privy to who it is yet, but as soon as we're able to disclose that, I'll let you know.
And one other. Yeah, one other thing, just because it's kind of in my wheelhouse, there's a some 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 development going on just northeast of Lake Enchantment Road on the south side of four ninety-two. Tremendous amounts of fill through it. Do you know what's going on in there at all?
So I do not. No, Randy, manager Gerard brought that to my attention. I'm going to be making contact with the owner over there. I drove by the other day. It's right across from the historical marker.
Right.
The centerline. So I'm going to be finding out exactly what the intentions are there, because there hasn't been anything that's come through.
You know, because there's drive permits and MDOT or the road commission, you know, they have to have that thousand-foot clear vision around curves and that kind of stuff. And I'm just just kind of curious if somebody is just putting something in there without asking, or if there's there's been permits pulled and cover permits and drive permits and whatnot.
Yeah, it's it's real close to, it's the corner of his property, and it's real close to the right of way. It appears it's pretty open to begin with, and now it's it's way more open. Rated down, sand, gravel. So I'm going to be making contact with them tomorrow and seeing what what he's doing.
I'm just curious.
Others have been as well.
Okay, I just have one additional comment. I just want to let you know that we just met prior to this meeting, the Iron Range Roll Task Force. And this year was a success. We only had half the, don't put this, don't put these statistics in the minutes, but it's it'll be formally announced, but we made, we had half the participate. And we're probably going to be able to donate as much money this year to Y as we did last year. This virtual race worked out really well for us. It still was a fundraiser, and it didn't cost like it does when you go to a physical event. So just let you know, National Trails Day is alive and well, and we'll be back at it next year, and I'm happy to have been a part of that.
Nice.
Any other comments from committee members? Okay, direct agenda. The planning commission agenda. So at this moment, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at eight forty-four.
Okay, Ryan?
Yes.
You're going to have to, you you stop the recording and then it's going to give you.